Ready to go? Okay. Good evening, everybody. It is December fourteenth, 2022 at seven fifteen, and I call the Committee of the Whole meeting to order, and we'll start with the roll call. Ellis?
Here.
Francie?
Here.
Gaken? Cashman?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Parachini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
And I'll try one more time. Lawrence?
He was down in the lobby. He'll be up in a minute.
Okay. I hear the elevator. Yeah. All right. We have no guest speakers tonight, so I will hand it over to the City Administrator and Department Heads.
Hi. Good evenings, Mayor and City Council. I have submitted my report to all of you as of Friday. Just a reminder that I did send out a poll for those of you who are interested in partaking in the strategic planning session. At the next meeting, I plan to bring back two dates for all of you to vote on and consider, or to consider and then vote on. And so I just wanted to see if there were any questions regarding my report. Okay, thank you.
Ruth?
Oh, yes.
On the poll for the strategic planning, can we still go in and amend those and modify it?
Absolutely. And, you know, you would select all of the dates that work for you. And then from those dates, I'll select the ones that have the most responses. And again, this is for two sessions that we're going to schedule two to three weeks apart. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other updates from our department heads tonight?
I snuck up.
I heard you before I saw you.
So I have two items on the agenda tonight. The first item will come through Finance Committee. That's the surplus of some Parks Property man lift, some fencing panels, and a 1991 utility trailer. The other item on the agenda are some items to be assessed into the museum collection. And then some projects in process. I will be bringing to you a resolution at the December twenty-eighth City Council meeting for you to authorize me to apply for the Washington State RCO grant for the Stewart's Park Trail. We are required to provide a 20% match. That match can be in-kind labor from city staff as well as any other grants that I'm able to acquire. It's broken out into two categories. $84,000 for the bridge replacement and $34,000 to make trail improvements to the sixteen structures that are along the trail, which include bridges, stairways, and boardwalks. The new Little League restroom building is scheduled to arrive the week of either January ninth or January sixteenth. And at the next City Council meeting on the agenda will also be a request for the council to accept the recommendations from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And I won't go too much into that because I believe Finance Committee Chair Ellis will be giving an update on that as well. The request will total $91,000. This spring, we'll be replacing the Jack's Playground equipment at San Ben Park with a team totter. So there's a photo of the team totter on there. We're excited to have that. And lastly, I wanted to thank the Grace Harbor Community Foundation. We were awarded a $20,000 grant to replace nine of our basketball hoops in our park system. And I also wanted to thank the Aberdeen High School Carpentry Class. They built us twelve new flower boxes to replace the flower boxes that are located on the fences as you come into downtown Aberdeen. Applied Alaska Park. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Barnum. Any other updates?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
So on the potential match for the Stewart Park and other systems, is that in the budget in case we need it?
The Stewart's Park project was not put in the budget this year as an expense or as income. The project wouldn't actually happen until 2024.
Thank you. Mayor Shave, you have any updates tonight?
Well, I'm kind of kicking it around here if I want to say anything about the newspaper article on homeless. But, you know, they asked me questions about what was going on and how things were progressing. And I submitted a whole page of, that I typed up answers. And they nitpicked through my page and put little pieces of this and that in the article to make it sound like it did. And it sounded like the City of Aberdeen was just doing everything it could to waffle out of having the emergency cold weather shelter. And one of the things you may not be aware of that I said that they did not print was that in the application that was made for the cold weather shelter up here on Broadway, the location up on Broadway, I did not seek any information on it, but I was personally called by the chairman of the Board of Trustees of that church. And that person told me that they knew nothing about having a cold weather shelter in their church. And I told that to the newspaper, but they neglected to print that in there. So the whole story in the newspaper, in my opinion, makes Aberdeen look like the bad guys again. And quite frankly, what's been going on is the county's been waffling in every way possible. Commissioner Pine has been on the run, on the go, working hard to try to find a solution. And he just keeps coming up against one brick wall after another. Recently, Commissioner Pine and myself looked at a piece of property and spoke with the landowner who's anxious to let us use his property and the buildings that are on the property for an emergency cold weather shelter and possibly into the future as a more permanent shelter location, where there's lots of space for tents. Commissioner Pine and myself spoke with the Coast Guard, or the Army National Guard, and they were willing to help with their big, huge tents that are heated as well. And as of today, the last word today was is the county's not interested because of liability issues. And the other issue was the septic system on this property won't handle that many people. And the owner of the property said he would personally send a truck out there once a week to pump the septic system, but that seemed to not be enough. So that's where we're at with that. But I do want to point out that Commissioner Pine has just about tireless sleep and working on this, trying to find a solution. And we seem to be getting nowhere. So that's where we're at. And I did have a little piece of better news. What was it? I'm going to have to start writing this stuff down before I get here. Wait till the last minute and then forget it. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, if it comes back to you, raise your hand later, and we'll circle back. All right. How about any updates from council members tonight?
Yes. Well, I've had several meetings in the last couple of weeks. Museum Board met on twelve-sixth, and we're making preparations for our workshop next month, or in a couple of months. The RFA Committee met on December eighth, and we're continuing work on getting the proposal ready for the councils to approve and get on the ballot. And then on Saturday morning, the Downtown Aberdeen Association held their annual meeting, and we discussed our projects for the coming year.
Thank you. Any other updates? I will adjourn the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, thank you. This is Mayor Shave, and it's Wednesday, December fourteenth, 2022, at eight, seven thirty-six.
Seven twenty-six.
Seven twenty-six.
Okay, seven twenty-six. And I call the Aberdeen City Council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the roll call, please.
Ellis, happy holidays. Francie?
Here.
Gaken?
Here.
Cashman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Parachini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Will Violet Morrison lead us in the flag salute, please?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Mayor Shave, I move we approve the minutes from the previous meeting. I second it.
Motion was made, seconded, to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions? Okay. Moving on to public comments. Anything on the agenda that the public would like to comment on? Come up to the podium and give your name and ward that you reside in. Check for $350. Oh, you guys are serious tonight. Seeing none, we'll move on to Finance Committee. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met tonight. And we're looking at the adoption of the 2023 budget this evening, as well as an item from the Parks Department. And I'll start out with the approval of expenditures. I move we approve expenditures.
I second it.
Okay. Motion was made to approve the payroll and expenditures.
Motion to approve accounts payable in the total amount of $1,909,756.34. And payroll in the total amount of $893,257.27. Check numbers 25678 through 25701, 79722 through 79912, and wires 124-1437. And now conduct the roll call. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Cashman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Parachini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving into reports and communications. First item is a discussion item from Finance and the Community Development Director regarding fee increases for building, engineering, planning, and rental registration permits. We were sent a copy of current and proposed fees. Aberdeen has had really low fees compared to other communities. And the proposed fees put us more in the middle tier compared to other jurisdictions. So we will be hearing more on that. There will be a resolution that comes back to council at the last meeting in December for us to vote on. And that would put these new fees into effect with the start of the new year.
I have a question.
Yes.
The comment you made about the fees putting us in a line about the middle of the tier, was that information just obtained after we held the Finance Committee meeting tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I did ask Director Scott if she would modify the information we were presented so that we could have on one page easy to see, I mean, to juggle through several pages.
Is that the year-to-year comparison?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
And showing percentage increase proposed?
If she can get that, she's short of staff. And so she heard that we would like that. And if she can get it together. Some of the percentages aren't quite so straightforward because there's varying amounts, and so...
At least the base fee, we should be able to get a percentage increase on the base fee.
Overall, it didn't look like it was really that much, though.
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
I was wondering if, in addition to the information that you're going to be provided, if the council could also be provided with information on what other cities' rates currently are and others, you know, like Grace Harbor and other cities throughout the region of comparable size to Aberdeen. I think that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. And I talked to Director Scott about that as well. Yes, Commissioner...
Councilmember Shaw?
I appreciate that this is presented as a discussion item tonight. I'm just doing... So we just set the rates by resolution. It's not by ordinance. So I was hoping that we could prominently share on some of our different platforms that this is being presented because the point of having it for discussion is so that some of the people who do business with us have forewarning and can maybe offer input on how that affects them. So can we, rather than just having it on the agenda, can we also do some outreach and share this out on some of our different platforms, our website, and I think we have a Facebook page as well?
I think that's a good idea.
All right. Question for City Administrator Clemens. So we had a discussion a few months ago when you first came on board about our city website getting updated. Can you give us an update on the status of that relative to posting information such as this?
As of right now, I believe that the Community Development Group, Development Department is undergoing a website change to make their website more user-friendly and intuitive. That is the only website update we're doing right now. The updates that we are doing from a technology standpoint, we've just overhauled our entire email system. And so that's our focus at this point. But yes, we will be headed in that direction. We just had a meeting today with all the directors, and there sounds like there is a desire to have more people trained within each department to make those, like, critical informational updates on the website.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Just quickly add, we did discuss in Public Works in our meeting tonight that the changes in the engineering. And we're bringing this forward with the support of Public Works Committee on the changes that are from the Engineering Department.
And that's with respect to permits?
With respect to the charges for engineering review for proposals that people bring.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other discussion, I'll move on to the second item, which is a report from Finance and the Parks Director recommending that the City Council authorize the surplus of Parks Department's upright man lift, twelve fencing panels with slabs, and the 1991 utility trailer to be sold at public auction. I move we adopt this report.
I second it.
That was good. Keeping into the festiveness of the season. Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Next, we have the third reading and adoption of Bill Number 22-12 and ordinance adopting the 2023 annual budget for the City of Aberdeen. I move we adopt this report.
I second it.
Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, ma'am. I would just like to comment that we recently approved a 1% increase in corporate tax revenue. But the city also is facing inflationary challenges with higher costs. And to balance this 2023 budget, we've had to dip into our insurance reserves to make this work. That's not a very sustainable way to budget long term. And so I know that in 2023, we're going to be looking at some really tough decisions so that we do have a balanced budget that is more sustainable moving forward. And we address those challenges of how do we move forward with police and fire facilities that are failing. So this is a budget that reflects a whole lot of work by staff and with input from council members. But it's one of those budgets that we're... It's just setting up our work for next year where we're really going to have to roll up our sleeves and make some tough decisions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Cashman?
I wanted to just clarify because the way that this was read was to accept a report, but I believe it's to accept the third reading and place the bill in final passage. I just want to make sure that that was the intent.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And your ordinance is...
Okay. I thought so. I just wanted to make sure it's on the record the right way.
This is the big McCoy.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
I just want to express appreciation for Finance Committee Chair Ellis's remarks because that is the heartburn that I also have over this budget. I feel like we are adding staff. We expanded a couple of programs, and we're doing this and that. But we've not really prepared ourselves for the cliff that's ahead of us when, as you said, the hard work of having to deal with the fact that we're spending more than we bring in. And as a council, as one of... As of a dump, just one of twelve as a councilperson, and so that's not possible for just me to come to a budget adoption meeting with a bunch of amendments that help make that right. And I hope that we commit in this next year to doing the hard work at really looking what we need to do to more closely align our expenditures with our revenue. So thank you for recognizing that, Finance Chair Ellis.
Anyone else? Councilmember Morrison?
And I'll keep it nice. I just wanted to tell the staff and the mayor, and most particularly the Finance Director, Patricia Soul, thank you for all the hard work that was put into the creation of this budget.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, City Clerk, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. This will be for ordinance 6690. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Cashman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Parachini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. The 2023 budget has passed. Good job, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. That is from the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Committee Chair report from Councilmember Shaw.
We'll move directly down to Item C, Reports on Communication. We have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the City Council authorize the mayor to sign Change Orders Number Seven and Eight to the Downtown Aberdeen Revitalization Traffic Improvements Project, resulting in a $143,719.07 increase. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded, to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Nick, would you like to speak to this? Why it's being increased $143,000?
Well, yes, thank you for the opportunity to come up and speak. I thought it was quiet, and I'm going, yes. In any case, the committee report, I think, is fairly straightforward. The principal purpose of being here tonight is the city's purchasing policy identifies that any time that we are executing change of conditions for contracts and it totals over 10% of the base contract amount, that does require council authorization. If you had a chance to read through the nitty-gritty of the actual documentation, you can see that actually that was something that I authorized back in July. And we've just now gotten to this point where we are formally executing this. The delay actually was driven by the Department of Transportation needed to authorize a few other things as it related to condition of award DVE requirements required in our contract. So it took us a little bit of time to get us to this point. But this is something that, you know, we had been talking about at the Public Works Committee for, you know, a number of months. And I apologize. It, you know, comes a couple of months after we've already opened and enjoyed the roundabout. But, um, you know, the, the base framework associated with these two items, item number one or, or change order number seven, uh, was a function of a storm drain pipe being actually too high. And so it would have actually functioned as a speed bump in the roundabout. For those that aren't fond of the roundabouts, that would have made it more difficult to drive through. Fortunately, we were able to make a subtle adjustment. It did cost, you know, quite a bit of money unfortunately, but we were able to get that pipe lowered, put down into a position where it's functional and meets the needs of, of both the stormwater system and the transportation system. The secondary item is the additional surveying elements. There were a number of grade problems that we saw during the construction activities. And that did require us to make a, a number of modifications that required the surveyor to be involved significantly more than, than we had identified in the base contract. So that's the principal purpose of the two change orders and the need for us being here tonight.
Thanks, Nick. The one thing I wanted to point out with, by having you come up and give us some insights is that this is not a new issue. This is something from clean back and before the asphalt was even laid down. So, so the Department of Transportation kind of held this up. You have a question there?
Just a comment, um, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but this added, um, cost is being covered by the grant funds we got.
I think that's probably the most important point and I omitted it. So I apologize, but yes, that is a hundred percent covered by the external funding that we have for the project.
Thanks. We don't have to give the roundabout back if we don't pay them.
Actually, Mayor, thank you for asking, um, Nick to address that because yes, on the Public Works Committee, um, we knew about this a long time ago and this is just a little dot on the eye. And yeah, I hadn't really thought that somebody might perceive this as more money we're paying and it's not. So thank you.
Stan?
I was just going to comment that I use the roundabout just about every single day and I love it. It's great. And I'm glad it was put in. Thank you.
Go ahead, Liz.
Does that project come with one percent or part?
Negative, unfortunately, we're zoned. But, um, you know, with the money that we saved, there is an option there.
All right, thanks, Nick. With that, anything, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We've gone to resolution.
Under resolutions, the Council may recall, wasn't that long ago where we authorized, in case it was needed, a pledge from our insurance reserves. And now we are recommending that that resolution be repealed because as hoped for, the staff was able to find a grant to make up that match. So we have a resolution repealing resolution twenty-two thirteen, therefore deobligating the one point eight four eight million of previously committed insurance reserves. I move we approve this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution twenty-two-two dash eighteen.
Mayor, other than expressing appreciation to staff for all of their work on these really significant projects, that's all from Public Works.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Chair report from Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Sheik. So Public Safety met this evening at six-thirty and there's nothing on the agenda. I'll just read the reports from each department to update you. So from the Aberdeen Police Department, our activity report, thirty-three thousand, four hundred calls so far this year, which is six point seven percent above last year. The apprehension police dog Roman will be medically retiring at the end of December. Police dog Roman has served A P D since April of two thousand and nineteen. We are searching for a replacement K nine and intend on starting training for the new four-legged partner in January of two thousand and twenty-three with K nine Officer Chad Pierceall. Aberdeen Police Sergeant Chris Rathman is retiring at the end of the month after twenty-nine years of service to our community. Sergeant Rathman is a patrol sergeant and was a field training officer as well. Sergeant Rathman was responsible for the massive years-long Green Jade investigation while he was assigned to the drug task force. A P D will be running online tests for entry-level police officers and P S O candidates next week. We have one officer in background and will have five openings with a recent announced retirement. The deputy chief and commander promotional tests were held last week. Lieutenant Andries, Andy Snodgrass has been selected to replace retiring Deputy Chief Jay Staten. Lieutenant Steve Timmons has been selected to become the next commander, replacing Chief Green. Up next is the lieutenant test the first week in January. Three sergeant positions will also be filled with the promotions, all taking place in early February, two thousand and twenty-three. And thanks to the generosity of our community, we were able to fulfill all the requests on our holiday giving tree. We will be delivering the gifts next week with the Aberdeen Fire Department and Santa himself. Thank you again for your generosity. And from the Aberdeen Fire Department, so call statistics for the month of November were five hundred and fifty calls in total. Year-to-date is five thousand, six hundred and forty-five, which is a one percent increase over last year. Last year was the highest call volume that, that they had in recorded history. And the Cosmopolis Fire Department call statistics, the total for November was thirty-one. The year-to-date is two hundred and thirty-five calls. From the Fire Service Specialist Report, the public services assist, assists, there were thirty-six public contacts made. There were nineteen home visits and out of those nineteen fifty, fifteen public service assistants for referrals were made. Six homes were visited for smoke alarm installation and thirteen smoke alarms were installed. The Aberdeen High School CPR class for the month of December, the Aberdeen Fire Department will be at the Aberdeen High School teaching CPR classes. These classes are for ninth-grade students who will be taught both CPR and first aid skills. And also some emergency response reminders. Help us help you. Here are some of the ways you can help your Aberdeen Fire Department respond as efficiently as possible. Make sure your address is visible. Keep areas around fire hydrants clear. Move over for emergency response vehicles. Do not park in fire access lanes. And please refrain from calling nine-one-one for non-emergency issues. You can call the Fire Department directly or the Aberdeen Police Department's line. And that's it for public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Special agenda items.
Yes, we have a few special agenda items tonight. The first one is a report from the Parks Director recommending that the City Council approve the accession of numerous donated items into the museum collection. I move that we accept this report.
I second.
Motion was made and seconded to accept this report. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a discussion item from the city administrator regarding the time of meetings and committee meeting time and place. I'm going to talk, did you want me to run through it? Sure, yes. Okay, okay, I'll go through it and then you can add anything and Councilmember Paratini as well. A, a few council members spoke to, um, our city administrator over the last few months about some of our codes regarding council start time for meetings and the way that meetings are run and whatnot. For the longest time, we've had this committee of the whole and I understand that it has significantly evolved over the last ten or fifteen years, maybe longer than that to, to what it is today. So the idea behind what's in the discussion items tonight, which are, are bulleted for council's consideration and maybe to provide a little bit of feedback if there's interest in council looking at amending the ordinance that is out there. So currently, the council start time for meetings is seven fifteen and that's being looked at to adjust to a six-thirty P M. start time. Committee of the whole would be eliminated with the, um, understanding that items that are within committee of the whole would be held within the regular council meeting as appropriate. The incorporation of a consent agenda, which is very similar to what other municipalities are doing when it comes to items, regular items that appear on the agenda consistently. Commitment to adhere to Robert's Rules of Order in terms of council discussion and the way that we conduct our business. Limiting council comments on, on topics and ensuring that all council members, since we have a very large council, have the opportunity to, to speak on items and don't feel like they're holding in their comments because of the amount of discussion that's on an item. Limiting the council meetings to two hours with the option to motion for additional time and changing the times and dates of our committee meetings as well in order to adjust for that time, knowing that we meet, some of the committee meetings meet prior to council meetings. So with that high, very high level overview, I'll open it up to any discussion if anyone wants clarification or wants to provide any feedback about if this should be brought back to council for consideration.
Under discussion, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. Incorporating that consent agenda groups many items into one. And so I was just curious how, how condensed that gets and will things get buried in, in the consent agenda? Or are these typically things that are more informative rather than requiring discussion?
Typically, how a consent agenda is used is for those revolving items like payroll. Those are things, it's, it is expected that the council review their packets prior to the meeting. So the information that you need. Or if there are prior, um, discussion items that are discussed in one meeting that don't need further discussion in the next meeting, those would go on to the consent agenda that don't require the, you know, second and third ratings or anything like that contracts typically. You would discuss a contract or anything and authorize that and that would go on the consent agenda. You also have the opportunity with the consent agenda if you, to bring it to discussion, to discuss the consent agenda. So it doesn't mean that you can't discuss it as well. So you do have that opportunity to discuss it before, prior to, similar to what you're doing now, prior to, um, adoption of the agenda, so.
Usually in the consent agenda, you just eliminate the motion and the second over and over and over and over on all these. But you still can discuss the issues.
I just wanted to say, I think it's a great idea. I love the idea of an earlier meeting.
I, I was just curious on a consent agenda, how much detail is listed on that agenda for both the public's consumption, um, but also the council to know the depth of information on all the issues that are being considered? So that if there's a need for discussion of a particular item, it can be called out.
Yeah, it would be from the previous agenda. So if, you know, items that way. But if, if you wanted to table something, you could definitely do that as well. So you have a lot of flexibility with a consent agenda. It just moves along. It can move along five pieces that are just kind of revolving pieces, like I said, like payroll and those types of, um, items, just to move them forward.
Usually approval of the minutes is included in the agenda.
Yes, yeah, sometimes, yeah, some places.
The things that are just routine.
Do it that way, yeah.
Administrator.
Councilmember Shaw.
So I think, um, this is a, a, a great thing for discussion. Just on the consent agenda, a couple of things that we have on our agenda on a regular basis that would qualify for a consent agenda are, you know, the minutes and the payroll and we dispatch with those in less than a minute. So, so that's fine. Most of the contracts that come to us are not renewals. We would not want to bring any original contracts under a consent agenda. So when I look, when I think about what comes to us, the only couple of things that would be on a consent agenda, so I'm not, I don't care about the consent agenda, just long as, like, um, Councilmember Ellis said, we don't start putting things on there that we think are routine. It would need to be defined what qualifies for the consent agenda, not just something that, you know, we want to dispatch with quickly. I'm probably one of the few people who can remember what, um, the committee of the whole used to be and how it has evolved. And I agree that the way we run it now is a complete waste of our time. It used to be, oh, oh my gosh, the committee of the whole used to be, the mayor will remember, it used to be a very robust, um, productive, coming together of different minds. And, but that's a whole different time that we don't live in now and maybe it is time to move on. And, um, so, um, as somebody who used to love the committee of the whole, the way it used to be, and I, I don't like the way we do it now, so. And I was not here when it evolved. I just remember how it used to be. And then when I got on the council and how we do it now, and I have struggled with how to make it meaningful and maybe we just can't, so. And as for a commitment to adhere to Robert's Rules of Order, I think we already do that. We just commit to not always. I mean, that's a, that's a function of, that's a function of the person running the meetings. And it is also one of the things that you can do with, with the consent of the whole, you can, you know. So I think that, um, yeah, we can commit to, we already commit to Robert's Rules of Order. We just, um, sometimes we agree to freelance a little bit and that's okay too. And I don't hate to give that up.
We still.
So that's, um, I support this, um, this report and I so appreciate our city administrator listening to the different voices of the council and, and coming up with things that kind of coalesce what she is hearing and coming up with things that we can all come together on and, and, and function better together. So thank you.
Josh Francie, I think, was next.
Oh, I, uh, just wanted to say that I agree that moving up the meeting till an earlier time is a good idea. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. As someone who tends to comment a lot, I, I also appreciate this proposal and I think it would be really good on a number of fronts. I am a little concerned about limiting all comments and topic discussions to three minutes per person, given that this is the forum that we have to talk amongst ourselves about, um, things that come before this body. And, um, and, and so if I speak for thirty seconds, does that mean I have two and a half minutes to speak the rest of the meeting? Or is it three minutes per, per agenda item, per discussion topic?
So, um, under Robert's Rules of Order, you're not limited by time, but you are limited per occurrence. In other words, a council member can speak once and only after, uh, everyone else has had their say would this, would a person be recognized to speak a second time. And that's the rule that we often freelance on and sometimes people can occupy, myself included, occupy more than their assigned number of terms. Because speaking a second time on a topic is at the consent of the majority. So I, I'm not, I agree, um, oftentimes, um, three minutes is longer than you think. But, um, if we're going to commit to Robert's Rules of Order, we can be more respectful by not commenting a second time until everyone else has had their say.
And I've never, as, I have never held the council to three minutes. That was, uh, it, it was always my thought that was designated for the public because if you get forty or fifty people and, and so on, that can really add up to a lot of time if they're just, if there's no time limit. So, Council President Cashman.
Yeah, I, I will reiterate that the, the spirit of that bullet is what you had mentioned, Councilmember Shaw, about the, the speaking to, two times. I do not want anyone to have to sit here with a stopwatch and stop council members in the middle of their thoughts. So that's not the intent of that bullet, yeah.
Councilmember Seater.
And I agree with the mayor that I thought that, and it was my understanding, the three-minute limit applied to public comments, not to the council comments.
Anyone else? Okay.
Do you need a motion from council?
To authorize me to put together what I heard today, which I heard was to remove the three-minute time limit on council members. And, um, it sounds like everything else is okay. And, um, yes, the, how, just, you will engage in thorough discussion on all agenda items before putting on the consent calendar. And we will work through those together and you definitely have the flexibility to put items back on the agenda for discussion if you would like to do it that way. So please, um, yes, we'll, we're all working together on this. So I look forward to creating this new thing for you.
So we're going to be shown a draft. And then we can go to the next step with a draft if we want to implement that or change it in any way. Okay, that sounds good.
I make a motion that we, um, draw up an amendment to the municipal codes that overlap with this, um, discussion. I second it.
Okay, motion was made and seconded to bring forward a draft of, um, a, um, new agenda procedure. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
May I recommend that, um, as you look at rescheduling the committees that meet right before council, that, um,
that maybe 5:30 would work for those committee meetings?
I don't have a comment on that.
Yeah, should we allow the committees to, or do the committees make that decision? Or I don't know if that's written, but we'll definitely, we'll work with the.
I believe the time was published in code, so it would just need to be modified, yeah.
Yeah. 5:30?
Thank you.
So it would be an hour before. And then the council meeting would start at 6:30?
I was gonna say, the reason it's the way it is, because it's always been that way. Everybody's favorite saying. Okay. Any further discussion?
When does that become effective?
We would have to go through three readings like an ordinance, so once those are all passed, public hearing.
We're just in the.
Late February at the earliest, earliest.
Yeah.
We're just getting things down to produce a draft. And so however it goes after that, so it's probably gonna be late February at the earliest. Okay, moving on to.
Yeah, to authorize me to draft up.
Oh, we didn't vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolution.
Yes, we do have a resolution authorizing the mayor and finance director to execute a labor contract with the Aberdeen Police Administrators Union, APAU, for the years of 2023 through 2025. I move we accept this resolution.
Second?
Motion was made and seconded to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-19.
This is the first of four union contracts that are all done. Yay. The second, that's right, the Fire Department was first. So we're moving right along. Oh, boy.
Run for our ordinance?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have our second reading of public hearing of Bill 2215 and ordinance amending Aberdeen Municipal Code 9.01.010, the Aberdeen Criminal Code. I move that we open the public hearings.
Second?
Motion was made and seconded to open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this, come up to the podium and state your name. Ward, signing a check for $300? No?
Are we discouraging everyone tonight?
I know they're, they don't want to sign it.
He's making it cheaper for you.
Oh, go ahead, Forrest.
Oh, hi, hi, everyone. I'm the, when anyone forgets, I'm the prosecuting attorney here. And I kind of, I want this ordinance to pass. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting when it was the first reading here. But we've had some issues here where I've been dealing with people who have been charged with lewd acts and that's the stat, that's the code that we have, or the statute we have adopted. And it's our own code, but we've had, and there's one particular person I think of when I'm dealing with this. But we've had several repeat, he's been a repeat offender. I'm sure I've had other repeat offenders. But there's one particular person who's been a repeat offender and the county will not take him as, they won't charge it as a felony because basically, just because we don't, we haven't adopted the indecent exposure statute. Our lewd act statute covers some things that are not, would probably not be covered in the indecent exposure RCW. And additionally, we have, we just have instances where I think some children, people under 14 witness this stuff and we don't really separate it like the indecent exposure statute does. And I believe this really, we need to adopt this. I'm not sure what happened back when we adopted the criminal code and this was not specifically adopted. I know I've had many conversations with the police officers and they've always, but they've always been on the assumption it's, we adopted it, but I always have to inform them, no. And I always amend it whatever, whatever the indecent exposure charge to lewd acts to cover the bases here. But I would really like to see this passed.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
May I ask Forrest a question?
Yeah.
Forrest, this is Katie Cashman. Would it be helpful if the council passed this sooner rather than later?
Yeah, it would definitely be helpful. I mean, like, like, as I said, it really spurred this. There was an incident and the officers came up and asked me and I'm like, the first, they said, what are we? When I asked them what they were thinking about charging, they said indecent exposure and I had to tell them, no. I think it'll just, the quicker the better. I really do.
Okay, any other discussion?
I move we close the public hearing. Your second?
Motion was made and seconded to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that we suspend the rules and consider the second reading the third and place Bill 2215 in final passage.
Second?
Motion was made and seconded to suspend the rules and make the second reading the third and placed on final passage. Is there any discussion? See you none? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to call for suspension? Oh, it's an ordinance. We don't need a roll call to suspend. We need a roll call to finally.
Thank you.
That's what I was thinking.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any oppose? Motion carries. Now, would entertain a motion for the third reading?
I move that we accept the third reading and place Bill 2215 in final passage.
Second?
Motion was made and seconded to approve the final passage of Bill 2215. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, please.
Ellis? Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Cashman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Paratini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Bill number 2215 is.
It's now ordinance 6691.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments about the urgency.
No problem.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Does anyone on the public have any comments? And you don't have to sign a $300 check. It is an option. No one from, no one has any comments? Come up to the podium and. Okay, we'll move on to city council comments. Anyone on the city council? Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to wish all of my council colleagues a happy holidays and staff as well. It's been a pleasure working with all of you this year. And just a encouragement in this season of generosity, goodwill and charity. But there are a number of people living on the streets, some are in treatment, others are waiting to be matched with housing. And as we're, as we're out in our yards or downtown, just to, to offer a smile, have a good day, donate food, clothes to a number of groups so that they can get to people who need them. And, and look for ways that we can unite as a community around so many of the challenges we face. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council comment. Councilmember Shaw?
So as most of you know, I work for the school district. And in the last couple of weeks, we've had some incidents that have, just for me, underscored the complete professionalism our public safety departments bring to protect our schools and our citizens. Well, for one, we had a drill at our schools, at several of our schools where the chief supported his staff in giving them the time to take to conduct some drug, canine searches in our schools that were really just the organization, the level of detail and the professionalism. I wish you all could have been where I was and could see our law enforcement at work and interacting with our students. There was one incident where, as it turns out, there was a student in a class, you know, that the kids get, you know, modified lockdown and they're not supposed to do anything, but they got word that one of the students in a class was actually interested in being in law enforcement. So they pulled that student out of the class and let them kind of shadow what was going on so that they could see what was going on, just really responsive to the interest of students. And the second incident got a lot of play in the Northwest. It was a really horrific kind of thing that terrorized some of our students. And our police department was on it and they were, I mean, they were on it. Not, it was just an amazing thing to see how much they, the level of response they brought to it and the resources devoted. And so then the very next day, I happened to be up at the high school and needed to get into somewhere. And I said, well, what's going on in there? And they said, oh, well, that, they're doing some EMS or some sort of, you know, EMS training from the Fire Department where they were interacting with our students to, to train them on CPR and stuff like that, emergency medical response on some of our career and technical education classes. So in the space of a week and a half, we all hear the reports about how busy our police and Fire Departments are, but they are also making time to serve in other ways. And I just wanted to publicly share that with you and thank them.
Good word. Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Councilmember Ross?
I just really quickly wanted to say that Winterfest was held this last Saturday, put together by the Downtown Aberdeen Association. It was a great event, great participation. Started out with pancake breakfast for the kids with Santa and there was a vendor and holiday shopping place and also the gingerbread contest, which was very successful this year. And our own, very own Stacy Barnum won first place, so congratulations.
Whoa. Thank you. Anyone else? See you none?
Executive session?
My turn?
Katie? We received a notification that the attorney can't attend tonight, so I would like to request to move the executive session to possibly the next meeting so that the attorney can join us. Yeah.
No executive session tonight?
Okay.
I know you're all this. Then I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
There it is. Motion was made and seconded to adjourn. If there's no objection, I will adjourn.
Good evening. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everyone.